I'm calling the Library Board of Fifty's meeting, uh, open at six oh one. Okay, we'll do local, um, but I'm gonna assist.
Yeah.
Montalena Altimirano.
Present.
And Mia Miranda is present. All rights for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any adjustments?
The agenda? No adjustments. Okay, and public appearances, uh, if you wish to address the board concerning any items within the board's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the president. And at this time, state your name and address for the record. The president reserves the right to place a time limit on each person's presentation for, or of three minutes. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to the clerk in writing. Any public appearances? No? Okay. Uh, moving on to work session, uh, C one Imperial Public Library Collection Development Policy.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. Um, we've sent everyone in advance our collection development policy. Um, for those of you who aren't familiar with what that is, um, uh, every library sets up, it's almost like, um, uh, an insurance policy that explains how libraries select their materials. Um, and so we're very fortunate to now have Catherine Wolf as our librarian, who took the time to, um, revise the policy that we had. Um, it did not have a date on it, so we wanted to, um, revise our, the policy and put it in plain language so that anybody in the city could read it and understand it better. So we did want to officially adopt this today, um, at our meeting. And we wanted to open it up for questions. Do you guys have any, you know, questions or concerns about any section of this, uh, policy and or the process when someone would have a concern about the materials we select? Both the policy and the, um, request for consideration form operate as tools for us to interact with our community so that they can, you know, express their concerns and also for them to understand how we go about our daily business, so.
And this is something that we had already in the past or is something that you guys came out with?
Um, most libraries have one. We did see one in a binder, but it did not look like there was any documentation that had ever been officially passed by the board. And we felt like this is an important enough document that you guys needed to have your eyes on it. And we also wanted the city to know about it, too. Um, this is, you know, an operating policy that most libraries have.
I do like that we have a waiting policy automatically and the donation policy, so that is great.
And it's clear, but at, at the same time, well detailed. I think it covers, eh, everything, at least everything I can think about in terms of collection development policy.
Well, thank you so much. And the credit goes to Katie. She did a lot of research and, and looked for other libraries and took pieces and parts and put it together to make it cohesive.
And this is what, uh, patrons would use if they wanted to request something.
Right.
Uh, that's a form, so if they have a concern about a material, um, they would fill that out and then submit it to us.
I, I would just say one way to approach this would be to, uh, in looking at the policy, think of something that you might, that might be considered controversial. And then look at the policy and see how the policy would deal with something that you might think of as controversial. Because this is, this is an area where I think reasonable minds can differ about the sort of material that should be in a library. I, I tend to think, well, my perspective is that having material available, uh, is a good thing. And that there's no better way to show something is right or wrong than to have it available to look at. If so, if somebody i- it says that, you know, the, the, the earth is flat and, and the way we deal with that is to, is to take the, and because we think that's a wrong idea, we want to take everything off the shelves that suggests that. Um, I, I don't think, I personally don't think that's the best way to do that. I, I, I think having it out in the open, uh, having, having people say out loud things that might be controversial. They, they might sound different in your head when you say it to yourself than when you say it out loud. That, that's kind of my thought, but like I said, I think we, uh, reasonable people can differ about, uh, uh, the sort of materials. So in looking at it, you might think about how, how would this a policy, how would this policy apply to? Think of, think of a book, right?
That's also been, I feel like, a more current dilemma with certain books and, and the education and things like that. So I think it is important, like you said, for the information to be available. Pick and choose, you know?
And it's especially timely, and that's why I appreciate you guys being here for us to adopt this so that we know that we're all on board and that we can, you know, interact appropriately.
Do I have a motion?
Hi, motion.
A sec. A second.
Uh, I have a motion and a second. That was the recommendation to the city council to proceed with the adoption of the revised policy. Moving on to reports. Um, item E one staff reports.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce our literacy coordinator, Elizabeth Luvano. She will approach the podium and introduce her teen makers.
Good evening. Esteemed members of City of, of Imperial Public Library Board. My name is Elizabeth Luvano. I am one of three literacy coordinators at our library. One of the grants I manage at our library is Stronger Together Teen Makers. We were awarded a hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty two by the California State Library to mo- to promote youth professional development directed at serving library programming needs. Our group of interns have designed STEM and art programs for all ages and abilities. These interns have developed professional skills through attending weekly leadership meetings and reading books such as Smile and Succeed for Teens. Oh, Luis, do I need to click this with the slideshow? Perfect. All Teen Maker interns have calculated budgets, made activity plans, their own social media ads, and presented library programs at our library. Our Teen Makers will provide STEM-based library pr- programming through November and December. In January, we'll bring on our last Teen Maker cohort before the grant ends in March. California State Library does not plan on offering another Stronger Together grant opportunity in twenty twenty four. Each teen will be presenting their October library programs. Tonight, I would like to introduce our Fall twenty twenty three Teen Maker interns. Adrina Flores, Emily Leal, Georgina Abrika, Amelia Severt, and Carlos Barajas. And Adrina will begin. And just so you know, each slide shows the, uh, social media ad that they designed themselves and then pictures from their activity.
Um, good evening, City of Imperial Library Board. My name is Adrina Flores. The program that I showed the kids was bubble art, which is one that involves science. As we were able to transfer and replicate art through the use of bubbles, kids were able to express their creativity with their art and learn about the sciences behind it. Thank you.
Good evening, City of Imperial Library Board. My name is Amaliah, and I had the pleasure of instructing the Imperial Library's sun printing activity. This activity used, utilized everyday outdoor objects to create shadow art, which the kids could design using sunlight and special chemically treated paper.
Good evening. My name is Regina Abrika. Uh, yeah, good evening. Sorry. I embarked on the Ubik Odyssey, an educational journey exploring the science of the squish and non-utonium fluids for differently abled individuals. I not only had the privilege of being able to teach others my knowledge on the substance, but also teaching myself some of the science involved. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Amelia Severt. Tonight, I am going to be talking about my activity. My activity was helping the kids learn how to make butter. I pre- I provided them a mason jar filled with heavy whipping cream. The kids then shook the jars for five to ten minutes. They also got a book and got and got to enjoy the, the butter with an English muffin. I also had the option to enjoy their English muffin with homemade preserves provided by the UC Master Gardeners. Thank you.
Good evening, good evening, more members of the City of Imperial. My name is Carlos Barajas, and my presentation was ice cream, which dealt with a, with a hands-on experience for the kids with chemistry while making the best treat in the world. Seeing the kids so determined and happy while learning about chemistry was a wonderful experience, and I can't wait to continue my ideas with kids. Thank you.
Okay, and as you can see, the kids loved the ice cream. And, um, uh, the next, uh, set of slides are from Jet Davis. He's a college student and he helps me with our Sprouts Babies and Toddler Program. He decided to choose If You Give a Mouse a Cookie. And he dressed a best cookie, of course. I was the milk. And he did, he did his own singing and reading. And, uh, we also baked cookies with the kids, so it was really fun. Let's give it up for our Fall twenty twenty three Teen Maker interns. Can I answer any questions tonight regarding our Stronger Together Teen Maker Grant?
I don't have a question, but I just wanted to say that, that was an amazing opportunity that you guys have, and you guys are so creative. Um, working with kids is very fun, and I am so glad that we were able to have you guys, um, come together and, and do these activities at the library for us. Thank you so, so much.
I echo Mia's comment. I'm very thankful for your efforts and your creativity and very good job.
You guys did an amazing job. It's refreshing to see students, um, helping other kids and getting you ready for the future.
So, uh, I'd like to speak on another grant that we also have. In twenty twenty two, twenty twenty two, California Libraries granted the City of Imperial eighty four thousand dollars for the Stronger Together Early Learning Sprouts Program. Our library has used this funding to construct the Sprouts Community Garden and provide library programming for babies and toddlers. We have a few improvements to finish before our grand opening, but it is coming along nicely and currently in use for Sprouts, Teen Makers, and Master Gardener programs. Please follow me for a brief tour of our community garden, if you would like to come out these doors.
Okay, thank you for that tour. It was amazing. And I can't wait to see what else comes out of the garden. I'm so excited. Any other staff reports or would we move on? We're good?
Oh, for sure. If I show you what we've started.
Of course.
This is new, and I'll have more to report in January, hopefully. Our Silver Screen Book Club has started up, and so for the month of December, we have a group of seniors that, um, all have A Christmas Carol. They're gonna be reading it during this month, and then, um, at, at the, in mid-December, they're going to come together, have breakfast, and watch A Christmas Carol. And so that'll be the pattern for the next couple of months with our book club. This is a new addition. We had a lovely lady named Lucy approach us at the library who plays Mahjong. Of course, none of us know how to play Mahjong at the library, but Lucy is an amazing teacher. And we, we've had one session of Mahjong. We have another one coming up on Tuesday morning next week. And, um, people have been clamoring to come and learn and play. So I'll give you an update on this next time we meet.
Can we look at it? And we, what does it look like? What, what is it?
After the meeting, uh, you guys just play with it. I'll open it up. It's, it's amazing. I would like to just thank Liz for, for her versatility, her range from, you know, toddlers and sprouts all the way up to seniors. We're so lucky that we have a programming queen who can just, you know, apply her skills, you know, to any project we ask her to. And so she stepped right up and facilitated this with some of her grant money, so we're very fortunate.
Oh, cool.
Because seniors, you know, seniors are a big part, and especially with snowbirds coming, um, it was something that was absent. You know, we spent all summer focusing on the kids, and so it's nice to go into fall and focus on, you know, the adults in our community.
And I know that, I mean, growing up here, sometimes you feel like, what else can we do there? You almost feel like there's a lack, so knowing that we're implementing things to keep people busy, even if they are snowbirds or they're out of school in the summer, you know that we are, um, catering to everyone, so that that lack of, well, there's nothing to do, there's something to do? Just don't know where to look for it. Thank you. Okay, uh, moving on to E two trustee reports. You wanna, wanna start and move your way down? Do you have anything to report? Yeah, you can start.
I mean, I've been, like, like, you know, I've been checking the library, tried to get there at least a couple times a month. Um, I've been checking what you guys have been doing on Facebook. You guys are doing great with that. Um, but what I would like to see in the month of December is to please email us the, every event that you guys are having. because I think you guys can be very busy, and it would be nice for us to go see what's going on on the month of December. And we can go and help you, like I offered before, if you guys need any help, just let us know, we can be there.
I think I don't have any report, I have seen, seen the pictures and the posts of social media, in social media about the library. And well, I think that that was great, the, well, the Teen Maker Grant group and also the garden is lovely.
Um, I don't have anything specific. I'm glad that a lot of things are moving along. Repairs will be made, I am so excited for that. And I just think we're moving in the right direction. We will miss you. I, I am so sad that you're leaving, but thank you for everything that you have done. I really do appreciate it, and you've kept us going. I can honestly say that. A lot of uplifts happened in the library, and it's very noticeable, so your mark has been left here. Thank you so much.
Well, it has been a pleasure getting to know all of you and also serving your community. And this little patch of the world has a piece of my heart now, for sure. So I really do appreciate that you guys entrusted me, and it has been, it's been, I've said that I've been given passion, peace, and purpose the last six months, and it's been wonderful, so thank you.
Yes, thank you. There's no other report? I will call this meeting, um, I will call this meeting at six thirty-one, and we will reconvene on Tuesday, December fourteenth at six P M.